Honor our country with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand and join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And, you know, while we're on the subject of seriousness, let's, we're reinstituting a little bit of a precedent or a historical precedent. A number of, you know, we wouldn't be anything without the people that are here, that are supporting our town, that are working for our town, and that are performing volunteer duties to help the town. And I think we all recognize what a great place we live in. And, you know, unfortunately, a number of people have passed on in the past year, and I'd like to acknowledge the people in memoriam and then have in a moment of silence. So let me read the names of town volunteers and employees who have died in the past year. Charlotte Strebel, Tom Barron, Beau Lawrence, Tom Kelly, Mary Manwaring. These were all very dedicated volunteers. Employees: Jack Capello, Lee Parisot, Rick Delmello, DeMello, Richard Pizzarella, Larry Holmes, Debbie Pollan, Robin Wilcox, Neil Rudin, Lilian Lapointe, Jacques McNate, Francis Richard, Donald Damstrom, Craig Kirker, Robert Fernal. Please join me in a moment of silence for these dedicated people. Thank you. I'd like to begin with the proceedings with the introduction of the Board of Selectmen. I'll introduce them, if I can see them, starting with Peter Smith, Dorcas McGurran, our newest select person, Mike Stone, Chairman, Dan Horgan, Mark Forrest, our Town Council, Kate Federoff, our Town Administrator, Bob Brittenauer, and our Assistant Town Administrator, Bill Scott. Behind me is our very dedicated Finance Committee, just getting into, this is like April tax season for the Finance Committee, so I'd like to have their Chairwoman, Stephanie Cox, introduce them, especially since there are some new members. Stephanie?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So as you mentioned, we do have a few new members. We're thrilled to have them with us. To my right, Rafael Gutierrez, one of our new members, followed by Robert Harding, another new member. And a continuing member to his right is George Perkins, who's also our Vice Chair. And then to his right, another new member, Sheila Vanderhoff. And then to her right, we have Nate Ladley, who's been on the Finance Committee for quite some time. And unfortunately, our other newer member, Richard Simon, was unwell and unable to join us, but we've got a nice new committee and chugging along, happy to serve the town. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. And thank you, Finance Committee, and thank you, Selectmen. Next, we'll, I'd like, we'll ask for a statement from Chairman Stone.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. On behalf of the Board of Selectmen, welcome to the 2022 Yarmouth Special Town Meeting. On the warrant tonight, we have 23 articles for your consideration. Among these articles are several new initiatives to help carry out the Selectmen's goal of safeguarding the town's water resources. To protect our public water supply, there are affirmative steps to initiate treatment of PFAS contamination impacting town wells, as well as an article to conduct an inventory of leadwater service lines that ultimately need to be removed. Another article creates a bylaw for handling water supply emergencies such as was the case with the historic drought conditions of last summer. And one more article seeks to purchase 10 acres of land within 1,000 feet of a water supply well for aquifer protection purposes. On the wastewater side, we will be continuing our program of pre-funding wastewater infrastructure and also adopting a state law that provides a longer period of time to pay back betterments for wastewater infrastructure. As you will hear in the presentations for each article, our staff and volunteers have put a great deal of thoughtful consideration into the proposals that Town Meeting will act upon here tonight. We appreciate the considerable efforts required to prepare the agenda for today and the work that will be required to implement the actions taken by you, the Town Meeting members, on these warrant articles. Thank you all for coming and participating in Yarmouth's 2022 Special Town Meeting. We appreciate your time and your commitment to our town.
Thank you, Chairman Stone. Next item on your agenda says Moderator Guidance. I'm not going to read all of these. I think a number of you, looking around, have been to town meetings. The one thing I would like to comment on is, in the interest of time, I always use the term that, to me, the two principles of the Town Meeting are the two Cs, democracy and efficiency. And some places put a time limit on speaking. Three minutes is a good benchmark, but I'll use my discretion where the subject seems to be fresh, not repeating. You know, I think, I think most of it is common sense. Any amendments must be put in writing, so basically, you know, that's the guidance I would have. Finally, before we get going, I would like to also recognize that we have a number of people who, and we've had, the last four or five meetings have been somewhat, let's just say, different with what we've been through the last two and a half years. Today seems a little bit more stable, so I want to make sure that we, that we recognize and sort of cement some gratitude for people that have contributed to the town and are no longer either, you know, on the payroll, so to speak. And those people who really should be recognized once and for all, former Selectwoman Tracy Post, our Natural Resources Director Carl Von Hohn, Fire Chief Phil Simmonian, Pat Armstrong. And I want to make a special comment because this person who retired, Chief Frank Fredrickson, a lot of you don't know that he actually had two jobs. And I don't know if he actually retired from the second job. The second job was, of course, poet laureate for the town of Yarmouth. And many of us will miss those phone calls with the poems. So I decided that, to take one more shot at it and see if the chief might consider sort of an emeritus poem at Christmas time. So I thought I'd call him out by using his own, his own game. So let me just talk about an ode to the chief. He started in 1977 and successfully transitioned to a star named Kevin. He strove to maintain unity in our great Yarmouth community. Rich man, poor man, beggar man, thief, but for the last, all shared mutual respect with the chief. And we can be totally sure that fair law enforcement will endure. The thing we'll miss from the bard is his poem in lieu of a Christmas card. So please, we urgently implore that your rhyming will humor us once more. And so our fervent Christmas wish is that whatever you do, it has to be better than this.[617.16][617.16](Laughter). So with that, so with that, I've thrown out the gauntlet. Let's begin with the articles, which is why we're here. First article will be read by Selectperson Dan Horgan.
Mr. Moderator, I'd move Article 1 as printed in the warrant.
Okay, it's been seconded. Explanation?
This article authorizes the payment of invoices associated with prior year fiscal year 2022 expenses that were not able to be paid before the closing of the books for fiscal year 2022. At the end of each fiscal year, some bills for vendors arrive after the close of town accounts for the fiscal year. The Massachusetts general laws require that a nine-tenth vote be taken at Town Meeting to authorize payments for such overdue bills.
Comments? Okay, this requires a nine-tenths vote, or basically unanimous vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The vote passes unanimously. Article 2, Selectperson.
Mr. Moderator, I'd move Article 2 as printed in the warrant.
Seconded. Explanation?
Board of Selectmen recommend this 5-0. This article funds the installation of a fire hydrant at the new Sean Gannon Police Training Facility located at the Higgins Crowell Road. A hydrant is required by the code for safety.
Questions? Comments? Before I get to that, I forgot to ask the Finance Committee for your recommendation.
Recommends 4-0.
Okay. Questions? Comments? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The motion, the motion carries. Article 3?
Mr. Moderator, I'd move Article 3 as printed in the warrant.
Recommendation?
Board of Selectmen recommend.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends.
Explanation?
This article transfers funds received during the previous fiscal year as the town of Yarmouth's share of the National Opioid Settlement, which requires appropriation and must be spent on substance abuse prevention efforts.
Comments? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries. Article 4, again, Selectman Horgan.
Mr. Moderator, I'd move Article 4 as printed in the warrant.
Seconded, Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen recommend.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends.
Explanation?
Due to the current high cost of gasoline and diesel fuel, as we did it last year, it's estimated that we'll need supplemental funding for fiscal year 2022. At the current price of gasoline and diesel fuel, it's estimated that we'll need an additional $125,000 for fiscal year 2023. This fuel funding is used to pay for fuel for all of the Town of Yarmouth vehicles.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries. Article 5, Selectman Smith.
I move Article 5 as printed in the warrant.
Selectboard?
Selectboard recommends 5-0.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends 4-0.
Explanation?
There is currently a remaining balance of $7,500 available in the vehicle maintenance account for the remainder of fiscal year 2023. Based upon known deferred repairs and anticipated near-term repair needs, the increased cost of vehicles and repair parts, it is expected we will need an additional $125,000 for the fiscal year. This repair cost is used to pay for needed vehicle repairs for all of the Town of Yarmouth's vehicles.
Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries. Article 6, Selectman Smith.
I move Article 6 as printed in the warrant and transfer $25,000 accordingly.
Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen recommends 5-0.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends 4-0.
Did I hear a second on that? Just, okay, thank you. I just didn't hear it. Explanation?
The Septus Division proposes to replace the odor control system located at the Yarmouth Septus Treatment Facility. The odor control system is over 30 years old and is at the end of its useful life. This article will fund an odor control system study, which will develop a recommendation as to the most effective replacement system. This recommendation will help to focus the design efforts to better understand the needs and costs associated with a new odor control system and allow for the product to advance to the next step of design, detailed design.
Questions? Comments? Nobody's driven by exit eight recently? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Article 7, Selectman Smith.
I move Article 7 as printed in the warrant and transfer $400,000 accordingly.
Board of, second, okay. Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen recommends 5-0.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends 4-0.
Explanation?
The Septus Division proposes to replace three vehicle scales at the Yarmouth Septus Treatment Facility. These scales are used to weigh the Septus hauler trucks to determine the fees charged for each load delivered to the facility. The existing scales are original to the facility, being over 30 years old, and recent calibration and inspection showed that the scales have reached the end of their useful life.
Comments? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The article carries. Article 8, which requires a two-thirds vote. Selectman Smith?
I move that the sum of $5 million is appropriated for the purpose of financing the design and construction of a temporary PFAS treatment facility, excuse me, treatment system at Wells 4 and 5, including all costs thereof as defined in Section 1 of Chapter 29(c) of the General Laws, and all expenses incidental and related thereto. That to meet this appropriation, the Treasurer, with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, is authorized to borrow $5 million and issue bonds or notes therefore under Section 8 of Chapter 44 of the General Laws and/or Chapter 29(c) of the General Laws and any or any other enabling authority. That the Treasurer, with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, is authorized to borrow all or a portion of such amount from the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust established pursuant to Chapter 29(c) and in connection therewith to enter into a financing agreement with the trust and otherwise to contract with the trust and the Department of Environmental Protection with respect to such loan. That the Board of Selectmen is authorized to apply for and accept any federal, state, county, or other funds which may be available for this purpose and to enter into agreements for acceptance of any such grants or funds provided that any borrowings authorized hereunder shall be reduced by the amount of such grants or any funds received prior to such borrowings. Excuse me, Dorcas. And that the Board of Selectmen or other appropriate local body or official is authorized to enter into a project regulatory agreement with the Department of Environmental Protection to expend all funds available for the project and to take any action necessary to carry out the project.
Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen recommends 5-0.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends 4-0.
Explanation?
The Water Division proposes to design and construct a PFAS treatment system for Wells 4 and 5. In 2021, Wells 4 and 5 exceeded the newly promulgated Massachusetts maximum contamination level for PFAS in drinking water and thus were shut down. The proposed treatment system would allow the Water Division to return these two wells to service in the shortest time possible.
Yeah, before, did we get a second on that motion? Second, it has been seconded. Okay. Thank you. Okay. Questions? Comments? Go ahead.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, members. Tom Sullivan, West Yarmouth, Precinct 1. I have filed with the Town Moderator amendment to the article, and I'd like to read the article, the amendment. Do you have that amendment? Amendment to Article 8, Mobile Reusable Paths Treatment System. I would like to add the following sentence in Article 8, I had to add the following sentence after the last sentence in Article 8. No action by the town can take place until state or federal funding is secured by the Town of Yarmouth first.
So you're making amendment. Do we have a second to the amendment?
Second.
The amendment's been seconded. Okay. We'll discuss the amendment. Mr. Sullivan?
Okay. Last week, the Selectmen had basically a pre-Town meeting. It was very sparsely attended. I asked a lot of questions on this. I'm kind of familiar with the PFF systems since I was stationed up at Otis. Paths come from several sources, not just septic systems, or professional opinions about the septic systems. These wells were shut down because they did exceed a new procedure by the state. In the meantime, since 1990s, we've had no new wells put in this town. So there we heard about during the summer with the water restriction, which is the next article, well, a few articles down, we'll discuss, how we had a water shortage. We don't have a water shortage in the town. The aquifer fire is full. No problem. We have a well shortage in this town. Okay? As I said, I questioned whether or not these paths came from a possible fire that was down the area. The fire chief could possibly answer this, whether or not, sometimes in house fires, they add foam to suppress the fire sooner. That's the biggest one that we hear and see is fire foam. But we don't know, we're going to spend $5 million, basically with a blank check, on a temporary system. It doesn't say in here, cover here, once the system, which is small, it's not like at Otis when you've got 150-foot tower of a water filter, it's a small system, once it becomes, it's full, it's candid, it's hazardous waste. And it's not covered, the cost of hazardous waste is high. Carry to the grave, where's the cost to take it, ship it, and everything else? It runs in a lot of money. That's why I've asked, did the town secure the funding from the state? I understand they have applied for grants, I believe the Town Administrator agreed to that. Did you have applied for grants on this article already? So let me, you know, we've got the water. They're not sure, I've asked about whether or not they want to do test wells to see where this is coming from. Is it coming from the septic systems? They don't know. Is it coming from the Yarmouth landfill, a plume?
No.
It's down off of Forest Road and Long Pond Drive is where these wells are. There was a house fire, as I said, several years ago, around the corner from it. And whether or not foam was added to the water, we don't know. All right? So I would ask that we at least support the amendment and let the town get the grants first to take the ease off of borrowing and put us in debt even more. We don't know how much debt this is going to cost us. I'm not against the, you know, cleaning up the water, don't get me wrong, but as far as spending the money first, $5 million is like a blank check on something we're not sure is going to work to clean up the water. All right? Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Other questions? Comments in particular to the amendment, and then we'll have responses from the town. Anyone? Yes?
Thank you. Joyce Flynn, South Yarmouth. I'd just like to congratulate the Board of Selectmen and the Town Administrator for their initiative in collecting from the state, from the county, excuse me, a grant of more than $1 million toward water quality. It seems that we're being very proactive on this, and it also seems that this could be the tip of the iceberg, that we have to watch chemicals very carefully. With regard to the gentle, previous gentleman's remarks, I'd point out that line 4 indicates temporary, so that this is not a, some kind of a permanent structure that could possibly go on to cost lots and lots of money. I also suggest the genius of the mobile aspect to it, because if there is, say, a water emergency that has a lot of PFAS in a district where it needs to be removed, the equipment can be moved to that and can, can remove the PFAS there and then be kept in the town's pocket for the next emergency. It seems to me that this is a small amount to spend, given the new water regulations we're confronting and given the new water hazards we've been experiencing. I urge you to vote against the amendment.
Thank you. Other question? Comment? Yes, sir.
Jim Cullen, Precinct 1. In reading this, I'm going to make the assumption that someone has an idea, and I assume it's Jeff, that this, these mobile, I didn't see temporary mentioned anywhere, mobile, which could be used on other wells, since we know we have at least two other wells, I believe, that are in a similar situation. Someone has to have an idea that $5 million is a pretty good number, because I would assume any grant application that is filed is going to have something with it, not simply this paragraph, because there has to be plenty of communities in the state looking for this kind of money. So my first question for clarification, does someone on the staff or the Selectboard have an idea that $5 million is roughly the size of what we're looking at, number one? Number two, the system is mobile, it says, without the E, which means you can move it, right? It says mobile, reusable. I see temporary there, but that means it's going to move on to perhaps these other two wells. So before I can come to conclusion on the proposed amendment, I would just like to have an idea, because I'm concerned that by the time we go through this and it kicks back, we're looking at another two or three years. And everyone knows these PFAS situations are very, very important, and I have a lot of confidence in our staff in the Water Department and the Facilities Department, so maybe Jeff can address those questions.
Thank you. Mr. Colby? Jeff Colby?
Yes, thank you, Jeff Colby, Public Works Director. I believe we have a slide that shows what this system looks like. There was a question about what, what does a mobile system look like? I'm a firm believer that a picture's worth 1,000 words, so that's what it looks like. And it can be moved from location to location. We do have a total of 24 wells. Three of them are offline for PFAS, one for PCE. And this system can bring those wells back online in a temporary solution at one location. Once that gets addressed in a more permanent sense, then it can be moved to another well. I mentioned we had three wells offline. We have other wells that are starting to show indications of PFAS, but they're not above the maximum contaminant levels, and this system could be used in those locations in the future. And if I may to address the amendment specifically, the town has applied for state revolving funds and been approved for emergency state revolving funds for this project. And so I think that addresses the amendment.
For $5 million?
For $5 million, that's correct.
Thank you. Any more questions on the amendment?
No, I just actually.
Identify yourself, please, in your precinct.
I'm sorry. Vita Morris, Precinct 1. I'm glad that the word "mobile" was included after last week's meeting, because my version of the warrant doesn't have the word "mobile." And actually, the temporary probably should have been just erased. And actually, the temporary probably should have been just erased and keep the "mobile." It's more clear then.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions on the amendment? Hearing none, we'll take a vote on the amendment. All in favor of the amendment, which says no action by the town can take place until the state or federal funding is secured by the town of Yarmouth first. All in favor of the amendment, say aye. All opposed?
Aye.
The amended motion fails. Now we'll discuss the motion itself, the article itself. Question?
Yes, good evening. Tracy Post. I have a question. All these articles seem to have new wording in it that I'm not familiar with, especially when it comes to a borrowing and a two-thirds borrowing. The article says, "or any other sum." Should it not say "any sum up to"? I just want Town Council to make sure that this is a lawful borrowing at any other sum.
My on? Oh, there we go.
Who wants to take that?
I can take it. So the article and the wording of the motion is prepared by Bond Counsel, who is special counsel, who specializes in borrowing and the language required under the general laws that is necessary. Obviously, the motion refines what the article says, and that's what you all are acting on this evening as opposed to the article itself, but Bond Counsel approves both the article and the motion.
Thank you. Any question?
Elvia Rodriguez, District Four. I have two questions. To what level will the PFAs be brought down? Will it be zero? Or will it be close to 20? 20 is the limit, and we're just a little bit over, from my understanding, on two wells. Are we going to bring the PFAs to zero, or is it going to be something greater than zero? That's one question. And the other question is, what are the annual costs to maintain each system if we're going to need three of these for three different wells?
Question? Jeff?
Certainly. It's 20 parts per trillion is the threshold, and a system similar to this that some of our neighboring communities have brings it down to a no detect. So it is a great question about what the level is, but it brings it down to the level of technology we have with a no detect. Is there still some very small amount present potentially, but it's no detected under current technology limits?
Well, that's good news to hear. And do you have any estimates on the annual costs to maintain it?
The system is currently under design. It's emergency procurement, we're moving very quickly in order to have these two wells back online for next summer. At this point, the best estimate we have for operations and maintenance is approximately $50,000 per year. That will be refined as we go through the design process and finish that.
And I do believe that you will need these for many years, because the density of the properties in that area, which is not going away anytime soon, might even increase. Thank you.
Thank you. This question here?
John Henderson, Precinct One, Yarmouth Port. I am currently a Yarmouth taxpayer, but I receive my water from the Barnstable Fire District Water Department. The voters of that district have just approved a $20 million PFAS filtration system that will be coming online shortly. My water bills are 114% higher than the water being charged at the town of Yarmouth, and is expected to increase by 20% a year over the next five years, and then will levelize at that point. So I just wanted to let everybody know what we might be in for in Yarmouth.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Mark Wilson, 128 Center Street. I needed some clarification from Town Counsel if possible, because I didn't understand the response about the term or any other sum being in there. It looks like it's saying $5 million or any other sum, and that doesn't appear to be any cap on it. And I, could you clarify that, your response again?
Right, so, through the moderator.
Go ahead.
So the article in any warrant article, so if you go through this entire warrant, can be more broad than the motion. So the motion is what you're actually voting on, and that, the language of that motion is, "I move that the sum of $5 million." So it's very specific, right? Where the article gives you some flexibility, because you may, after posting, decide you need $5,100,000, right? So it gives you flexibility to adjust, or maybe $4,900,000. You can adjust when you have full information. So, but what you're voting on is a sum specific, as specified in the motion, which is on one of your slides that says specifically $5 million. So no other sum.
Can I answer your question?
Where does it, where is that or any other sum omitted? Because I see it up there and I see it on my sheet here.
Right, so that's the, that's through the moderator? It's okay? So right there is the article, and what you're voting on when you say yes or no is the motion, which is probably the previous slide or something like that, if someone wants to pull it up? Oh, it's just red. So when you heard Mr. Smith read the motion, that's what you're voting on, and he said...
That's when my antenna went up, because the wording in black and white says, "or any sum."
Yeah. So sometimes articles in warrants don't even provide any sum. They just say a sum of money. And then at town meeting, when you move that particular article, you insert the exact amount. But that precision is in the motion that's before the body tonight, and it's $5 million, period.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator? Could I be rec?
Yes, Mr. Stone.
Excuse me. In the language that was read by Selectman Smith, I think the salient portion of that is that the Board of Selectmen, and this is a quote, "Board of Selectmen is authorized to borrow all or a portion of such amount." So to me, that's pretty clear that it's $5 million or some lesser sum. Plus, there could be grant money that further reduces that $5 million to a different sum, which is why I think the wording has to be a little broader.
Thank you. Take one more question?
Thank you. Norm Holcomb, Precinct One. So let's say hypothetically that the, we get a $4 million grant. What is the, how much is the Board authorized to borrow at that point? Is it $1 million?
Okay. Yep. Counsel?
So yes, because of the language that says it may be reduced by grant money, that would mean that they would borrow just the $1 million as opposed to $5 million plus $4 million in grants.
Was that in the motion, or is that? It's not clear in the wording. I don't know, was it in the motion? I'm sorry, I walked in kind of in the middle of this, so I apologize.
It is in the motion. It says that, if I could repeat it for you, because there was a lot in that motion, and again, it's sort of legalese there, but it says that "any borrowing authorized hereunder shall be reduced by the amount of such grants or other funds received prior to such..." Hang on, I have to turn the page. I can't turn the page. "borrowing." So that's right built into the motion, so they're automatically going to decrease the borrowing should they receive grants.
Okay. That's clear. Just a point of order. I think it's very confusing to residents of the town, voters that are here tonight, to have a motion on the Board and have a motion in front of us that is different from what the select board is actually reading into it. And it's very confusing, I think misleading.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion. We have opportunity to vote on the motion as presented. It's a two-thirds vote. All in favor? All opposed? The motion carries by a two-thirds vote. Before we get to the next article, you know, when you're introducing people, you introduce people, but it's easy to forget the one that's sitting next to you, and it's Mary Maslowski, our town clerk, and she's important, because my leg is bruised when she's kicking me for forgetting all these things. So Mary's very, very important. I don't mean forgetting her, but forgetting all the other stuff I'm supposed to do. So thank you, Mary. Article eight, or article nine? Selectman Forrest.
Mr. Moderator? This is another long motion, so please bear with me. "I move that the town, that the sum of $455,000 is appropriated for the purpose of financing the completion of a lead service inventory and replacement plan, including all costs thereof as defined in Section One of Chapter 29(c) of the general laws, and all expenses incidental and related thereto. That to meet this appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, is authorized to borrow $455,000 and issue bonds or notes therefore, under Section Seven of Chapter 44 of the general laws and/or Chapter 29(c) of the general laws, or any other enabling authority. That treasurer, with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, is authorized to borrow all or a portion of such amount from the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust, established pursuant to Chapter 29(c), and in connection thereto to enter into a financing agreement with the trust, and otherwise to contract with the trust and the Department of Environmental Protection with respect to such loan. That the Board of Selectmen is authorized to apply for and accept any federal, state, county, and/or other funds that may be available for this purpose, and to enter into intermunicipal or other agreements for acceptance of any such grants or funds, provided that any borrowing authorized hereunder shall be reduced by the amount of any such grants or other funds received prior to such borrowing, and that the Board of Selectmen or other appropriate local body or official is authorized to enter into a project regulatory agreement with the Department of Environmental Protection to expend all funds available for the project and to take any other action necessary to carry out the project."
Board of Selectmen?
Recommends unanimously.
Finance Committee?
Recommends four zero.
Okay. Explanation?
Mr. Moderator, the Water Division for the town of Yarmouth is proposing to complete a lead service line inventory, which is required by the United States Environmental Protection Agency. Their revised lead and copper rule is dictating this action. The rule requires that all water systems determine and document the material of all service lines for the purposes of identifying lead lines, and to do so by October 2024. So the Yarmouth water system includes over 16,400 service lines and has minimal documentation as to the material of each service line.
Thank you. Questions, comments? Seeing none, take a vote? Oh, I didn't, Kurt? Sorry, Kurt?
Curtis Diaz, Precinct One. I'm curious about, is this water revenue that's going to pay these debts, or is this general? Anybody know?
Jeff?
Yes, to the extent that any expense has occurred and payments need to be made, it would be through the water funds. In this particular case, this is worded as a borrowing authorization, but we do have indications from DEP. This is also an approved state revolving fund program where we would get 100% loan forgiveness. So for this particular article, this is a special circumstance, but we expect to receive 100% of the principal forgiveness on this particular project.
Question? Other question?
Vita Morris, Precinct One. Who will carry out this inspection, this evaluation of, is it going to be the town employees, or do we have to hire somebody to do that?
Jeff?
There will be a separate consultant that does this extensive review of all these service lines.
Any other questions? Did I miss anybody? This requires a two-thirds vote. All in favor? All opposed? I see one. The motion carries by a two-thirds vote. Article 10, and that's Selectman Forrest.
Mr. Moderator, I move Article 10 as printed in the warrant.
Second. Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen unanimously recommends.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends four zero.
Explanation?
Mr. Moderator, strategic planning is a process that defines an organization's mission, identity, value, and most importantly, its vision and the plan to arrive at a newly defined future space. Strategic plans are homegrown processes. Yarmouth is not the only fire department that has done this. Numerous other fire departments do this as well. It's developed within the organization to articulate a direction to meet the challenges that exist here over the next several years. It exists as a living document that is regularly reviewed and updated. The plan will focus on the coordination of activities of the department and the leadership development within the department, and will help provide for a roadmap for all future actions, and is the basis for other fire-related planning, as well including personnel, budget, and capital. So funding will be used to pay a consultant and personal costs to complete the plan.
Questions? Comments? Hearing none? All in favor? All opposed? The motion carries. Article 11, Fire Department Capital, Selectman Forrest.
Mr. Moderator, I move Article 11 as printed in the warrant.
Second. Board of Selectmen?
Unanimously recommends.
Finance Committee?
Recommends four zero.
Explanation?
Mr. Moderator, Fire Department vehicles and life safety equipment are funded by ambulance revenues. In addition to the above required grant matching funding amounts, supplemental funds for replacement of the forestry, 49, is a $510,041 grant, and extractors and gear dryers, a $54,545 grant, will come from two recently awarded grants with a combined total of $564,586.
Questions? Comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Article 12, Selectman Forrest.
Mr. Moderator, I move Article 12 as printed in the warrant.
Seconded. Board of Selectmen?
Unanimously recommends.
Finance Committee?
Recommends four zero.
Explanation?
Mr. Moderator, last year, the town initiated funding a wastewater enterprise fund, using several sources of funds, from free cash generated by the short-term rental tax, from septic host fees, and septic betterment payments. Similar sources will be used in the future to provide funding for this account. These funds can be used for funding the costs associated with and the construction related to future min- to future municipal wastewater improvements, including possible debt service. As the wastewater projects are developed for the Town of Yarmouth, this article is meant to provide the initial funding to help defray some of the capital costs.
Hearing none? Will vote all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Article 13, Chairman Stone.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move Article 13 as printed in the warrant.
Second. Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen recommends five to zero.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends four to zero.
Explanation?
This article accepts the provisions of state law, which allows towns to extend the wastewater betterment loan payback period from 20 years up to 30 years in order to allow homeowners and businesses a longer payback period for wastewater betterments associated with the development of a municipal wastewater system. An owner of land assessed may pay the total remaining principal amount due without a prepayment penalty.
Questions? Comments? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Article 14, Chairman Stone.
I move Article 14 as printed in the warrant.
Second. Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen recommend five to zero.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends four to zero.
Explanation?
This article funds the cost of public, educational, and government cable television access services for the current year, including the operation and programming of the town's cable access channels, Channel 18 and 22. The source of funds is the cable television PEG access fees paid by Comcast to the town and closed out into the general fund, free cash. Effective July 1 of 2022, due to action at the April 2021 Annual Town Meeting, these access fees will be deposited into a dedicated account, which will be used to pay for the cost of these operations, starting in fiscal year 2024.
Do we have any questions? Yep, we do.
Hi, Irene Payne from Precinct Six. I just want to speak in favor of this and also a little bit more, because PEG means public, educational, and government. And, you know, I do have friends in other towns, and they're watching all kinds of programs that have been videoed from their COAs to their libraries on their local channels with the money that has come from Comcast for this purpose. So it's been a while that this town's been receiving a lot of money from Comcast, and it's all gone into the general fund. But as this says, from now on, it's going to be going into a fund just for PEG. So I would really encourage people to ask for some video coverage of some of the great things that go on at our libraries and at the COA. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Article 15, Selectmen, Chairman Stone.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move Article 15 as printed in the warrant.
Board of Selectmen?
The Board of Selectmen recommend five to zero.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends four to zero.
Explanation?
The explanation, Mr. Moderator, is what to do with this facility after the students relocate to the new school. It's anticipated that the Dennis Yarmouth Regional School District will vacate these premises. It says in the explanation in January, but my understanding is more likely in late February of 2023 to move to the new facility on Station Ave. This analysis is necessary to create an effective reuse plan in a manner that considers multiple alternatives towards achieving an effective reuse of the site. The Selectmen-appointed Study Committee, which has not been formed yet, will take specific steps, such as those outlined by the scope of work on file in the town clerk's office, to ensure inclusion of the many interests in the property in an impartial manner, and combine that input with technical support to determine alternative scenarios that will contribute to, but not be limited to, one of the, one of the many of the following areas. These areas are economic, cultural, recreational, tourism, social, housing, parks, community centers, or educational development of the Town of Yarmouth. The outcome shall provide plans, profiles, and renderings with costs associated with its engineering, permitting, design, construction, implementation, funding, and operations, with an understanding of impacts on the community, both as a whole and nearby to the site. There have been discussions as to the possibility of the adjacent ME Small Elementary School moving. As a result of that possibility is considered in this analysis. The scope of the project is provided in the town clerk's office. Commence it with the filing of the town warrant.
Thank you. Questions? Comments? Yes, hold on.
Hi, Greg Bogel, Precinct Two. I was just wondering, if I had my way, we would rewild the area. So assuming they come back with three to five options that don't include that, are we at all committed to those, or can we just say, no, we don't like any of that? Carry on. Anybody?
Last, Mr. Scott?
Sure. Just, Bill Scott, Assistant Town Administrator. Just to give everybody a heads up, there's a brochure that gives you the detailed scope on this. The process is inclusional throughout the entire sort of scope. This is the sequence of studies that are going to occur. So as we go through the process, we would encourage participation. So if you start seeing it going in a direction that you don't like, or other people do, there'll be public meetings. So the purpose of the committee is to basically do outreach. So we start with a building and grounds assessment, facilities assessment of other facilities, and make sure what's the relationship between this facility and our other facilities. And then we have focus or subgroups. So we'll have meetings with people, and people who are interested in reuse, they would be asked to file a request for proposals or a proposal against that, so we can compare apples to oranges. After we get some of those, we'll have a community survey portion. So as we get ideas from community groups, we want to push those back out through a community survey and ask, what do you think? So you'll be able to comment before we get to the end.
Perfect. Thanks a lot.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Other question? John Henderson, Precinct One, Yarmouth Port, and former school committee member. So some of the properties, DY properties, are owned by the Town of Yarmouth, and some are owned by the district itself. Can somebody confirm that these two properties, in fact, are owned by the Town of Yarmouth?
Well, they're not, they're not owned by the town. They're owned by the school department, is my understanding. And they were, at least the ME Small School will still continue to be ME. The Matic Key School will hopefully be turned over to the town. By the DY district is my understanding. I mean, it will be vacant, so the purpose really is to do a utilization study to determine what the next step is. And then obviously, we'll be in concert with the school department as we move forward. And then as we get to a point where properties need to change hands, we'll take that step if it's necessary.
So are you inferring that these two properties are owned by the district?
I think they're owned by the town, yeah.
They're owned by the town?
Yeah.
Okay. That's what I want a confirmation of. Thank you. Okay. Thank you.
That'd be good to know.
Seeing, hearing, no further questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Article 16, Chairman Stone.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move Article 16 as printed in the warrant.
Second. Okay. Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen recommend by a vote of five to zero.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends four to zero.
Explanation?
The condition of recreational assets and the capacity of those assets are crucial to ensure the safety and full use and enjoyment of the facilities. This proposal will create a three-tiered plan. First, the process will assess the condition and capacity of recreational facilities. Then the plan will establish the most optimum approach to address those needs through a detailed capital plan with cost estimates. Finally, the plan will create a long-term financing approach to establish opportunities for timing improvements with grant funding opportunities. The outcome will be a clear picture of the recreational assets of the community tied together in a logical sequence of improvements with an understanding of financing options. The opportunity for multiple funding options is based on the availability of clear planning and capital documents. The intent of a fall town meeting article is to move forward with assessment and to determine possible approaches for grant opportunities, which typically occur during the spring and summer.
Questions? Comments? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Article 17 is Selectperson McGurran.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move Article 17 as printed in the warrant.
Selectboard?
Board of Selectmen recommends five to zero.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends four to zero.
Explanation?
The golf division capital expenses, excuse me, are related to completion of the necessary work to complete the Bayberry Hills Clubhouse exterior upgrades. New shingles, trim windows, and doors will be installed. This will complete the clubhouse project and protect the building for years to come. The direct transfer pipeline will allow for more efficient wastewater be moved from the plant to the irrigation pond to allow the golf course to use wastewater throughout the entire course, relying less on the wells that support the course. Lastly, the links course master plan will fund the design, engineering, and specification work for future improvements to the links course. The total for these improvements is $560,000, which will result from retained earnings through the Golf Enterprise account. Therefore, property tax dollars are not necessary for these investments. The retained earnings account currently has $2,229,445.
Comments? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Article 18, Selectperson McGurran.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move Article 18 as printed in the warrant.
Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen recommends five to zero.
Did the Finance Committee vote?
Finance Committee recommends four to zero.
Explanation?
The purpose of this bylaw amendment is to protect, preserve, and maintain the public health, safety, welfare, and the environment in the Town of Yarmouth by ensuring an adequate supply of water for drinking and fire protection, and to protect the quality and quantity of water in local aquatic habitats, such as ponds, rivers, and wetlands. This will be accomplished by providing for the imposition of any duly implemented best management practices or nonessential outdoor water use restrictions imposed by the town in accordance with the bylaw. The Yarmouth Water Conservation Policy and/or by the Department of Environmental Protection under its state law authorities.
Questions? Comments? Yes?
Morris, Precinct One. I move that Article 18 be postponed indefinitely until such time as DPW can provide the taxpayers with more definitive information on which this proposed draconian bylaw was based.
Is that an amendment, or?
No, it's proposed indefinitely.
All right, okay.
It's a motion indefinitely postponed.
You make a motion to indefinitely postpone. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. We'll take questions or comments on indefinitely postponing.
Can I just make a short comment about it? I'm looking to get some information from the DPW. For instance, what kind of experience did they get or response to the restrictions that were imposed by them last summer? I think it would be very helpful for us to know, you know, whether this bylaw, proposed bylaw is even necessary, if we knew exactly what happened, you know. And I also have a kind of a question for the DPW people. Are you using, is the grass or turf that you have at your new headquarters?
Can I interrupt you for one second? Just so, this is an amendment to substitute the motion. Go ahead. I just clarified the procedure.
Okay. Well, anyway, the, whatever it is, it seems to be very green. And so how did they maintain it that way during the, and shortly after the drought sort of ended? I go by there quite often, and I'd like to know how that occurred. I mean, is this one of those do as I say and not as I do situations?
Further comments?
I'm asking him a question. I really want an answer for that.
You want to answer any other? We're talking about the substitute amendment. Anybody want to comment? No?
Why do you keep talking about an amendment? This is not an amendment.
It is.
It's a motion to postpone indefinitely. Why is there a problem about that?
Does anybody want to comment?
When can I get an answer to my question?
I'm asking if anybody wants to answer your question. Yes?
My name is Brian Braggington-Smith, Precinct Six. And the reason that we had to put a restriction on the water use was because we were experiencing a severe drought throughout the region. This is an impact of climate change, and we can expect it to get worse. And we have to be prepared for that kind of an emergency. This appears to be something that allows the town to be able to facilitate emergency measures that will protect our water supplies for the public health and safety. This is not something that is a draconian measure trying to control us and prevent us from getting access to our water. If we look at the articles in this town meeting, what we'll find is that water is a serious issue. Pollution, availability, you know, we keep putting more and more people onto this tiny peninsula, and we think we've got this cornucopia of unlimited supply. We don't, and the environment requires water, too. So we need to become better stewards. And by the way, I have to laud the town for the stuff that's on here tonight, because you're doing great work. And the future depends on what we do. Just a comment.
Thank you. We'll get back to you, but the gentleman behind you, we'll take his comment first.
Waiting for the answer about what went on about the grass at the headquarters.
Next question?
I'm going to wait. Thank you. I'm going to wait, I'm going to wait till we vote for this or against this, and then I have a comment.
There any more comments or questions on this amendment to indefinitely postpone? Hearing none?
How come I'm not getting an answer to a question? It has to be from Jeff Colby.
I'm treating this like an amended motion, so we, is there any way to frame your question in 20 words or less? in 20 words or less?
I want to know what substance was used at the grass or turf because the, at the headquarters of the DPW, because throughout the drought situation, there was as green as the properties of the people who continued using their irrigation system. That's what I want to know, and what they, what they used.
Your question will be answered, and I'm referring it to Mr. Colby.
At the DPW, we followed all the water conservation restrictions. Proper turf management was supplied. If you want additional information on how to keep your lawn as attractive as possible, I'm happy to talk with you offline, but we followed all of the water conservation restriction measures.
Well, it's just amazing, because the only properties that I saw, private properties that were as green as the grass at the DPW, were the ones who obviously did not follow the, in terms of using the irrigation systems. They were the ones who used the irrigation system. And I, I just, I would like to then see, or, you know, it's very easy for them to supply some information as to how exactly we did during this period of restrictions.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Colby, for the answer. Thank you, Ms. Morris. Any more questions on the amendment to postpone?
Good evening, Richard Donahue, Precinct Seven. What I'm curious about is the Section 142-1, dash 11, on page 13.
Is this pertinent to postponing?
Yep. Irrigation system connected to the public water supply. I think it should be postponed until that's explained. What's the purpose of registering a system in? Is it a system that works? Or if you have one that you don't use, do you have to register it? Is it annual, or is it a one-time? It says that a fee may be charged. Is it going to be charged, or isn't it? And it says that the Water Department will set the fee. That's fine. How much? Thank you.
So, you're speaking in favor of postponing?
Postponing the article.
Okay, thank you.
The whole thing.
Thank you. Next.
John Henderson, Precinct One. I have some questions of Jeff Colby, DPW manager. How will this article apply to taxpayers of Yarmouth who receive their water supply from other governmental bodies or municipal entities? And how will it apply to individuals who irrigate using their private well systems?
Mr. Colby?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Just generally speaking, the town of Yarmouth already has a water supply emergency bylaw. This, what you see printed in your warrant, will simply replace that with a water supply conservation and emergency bylaw. Many of the questions that were just asked by the previous speaker will be policy issues that will be taken up by the Water Commissioners, which are the Board of Selectmen. They can't be specifically answered. This just gives authority for applying conservation measures that were part of a policy that the Board adopted this spring and allowed us to supply water to the customers as was demanded. There's actually a chart on the slides here that show that the conservation measures did work. And I can talk about that now or later if appropriate, Mr. Chair, but it's the next slide, I believe, Bill. It's a little difficult to see the numbers here, but about two-thirds across the bar, that's when the Level Two conservation measures were applied. And there was a steep drop-off in the blue line when those conservation measures were applied. So, we did see people respond, and we're able to keep up with the water demand. So, it is very important to have a program in place where water is conserved so that we can meet everyone's demands. That's the best answer I have for your question.
I understand that, but I'm a Yarmouth taxpayer, and based on my street address, I had a mandatory requirement that I could only irrigate on Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays, but I received my water as many other individuals in my neighborhood do, 50-some lots, and others around the town as well. The Barnstable Water Department imposed a voluntary watering scheme on Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Saturdays for my address. So, which one would dictate, and would I be subject to penalties if I were to irrigate on the days that were mandated by Yarmouth, even though I'm getting Barnstable water? It's a question of Jeff.
Is there, is there an answer to his question?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. Previously, I've mentioned that's a policy question that needs to be brought up before the Water Commissioners, which, again, are the Board of Selectmen. It will be decided in the future. This specifically, what you have before you, printed in your warrant, does not specifically address that individual policy decision that has to be made in the future.
Okay. Thank you. I think it's been clarified that some of these.
It addresses fines.
Yeah. Go ahead.
It addresses fines for violations. I'm just trying to get clarification.
The question is about fines?
Yes. Okay. I'll just advance this. I'm gonna recommend in, recommend for indefinite postponement based on the fact that there are too many unresolved issues surrounding this article.
Thank you very much. Over here?
Angela Carbone, Precinct Six. Thank you. Sorry, I don't do numbers real well. I'd like to move the question of the, just to get this over with, because we're now debating the original motion. And I don't think that it, I don't know the, I mean, if.
You'd like to move the question about the postponing?
Yes.
Okay. Question's been moved, seconded? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. All in favor of the recommended motion, the amended motion to indefinitely postpone the article? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? The motion to amend fails. Back to the original motion? Yes, sir.
David Bernstein, Two Astoria Road, Precinct Six. In favor of the new regulations as written, I do have one comment, and that is, when everything went into effect this summer, about a month afterwards, well, I walk every day in my neighborhood, but about a month afterwards, I started counting houses that were still using the irrigation, most of which were rentals or people who don't live on the Cape, but some people who do live on the Cape and should know better. Anyway, I counted 55 houses in my neighborhood who were still irrigating, some every day, some for even an hour and a half. So, I appreciate that you do have the penalties, but penalties are only as good as enforcement. And I think I would like to make sure, my comment is, they want aggressive enforcement if we're going to pass this. I want people to stop using water if we have an emergency, because if we run out of water, we might as well close the bridge and go home. Of course, home is here, so that's a difficult thing to happen, but you know what I'm saying. Basically, we need enforcement, and the enforcement needs to be strict, and people need to be told not to water. I told my neighbors who would cut down here in the summer, and I told them about this, and they ignored it. Why did they ignore it? Because under the present system, there really is nothing anybody can do. Under this new system, they'll get fined and can't have their water turned off. So be it. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris?
Christine Greeley, Precinct Six. I actually was one of three people who attended the session that the Selectmen held last week to go over the articles. And during that time, on the warrant, during that time, we did have the opportunity, anyone who was present, to question further various warrant articles. My concern has to do with Section 142-11 with the sprinkler systems connected registration. The questions I asked had to do with exactly what is going to happen with that. And if you take a look at the language in here, and the explanation that I got at the time from the DPW, was that we're talking about a registration fee, okay, of unnamed amount in here. So, those of you who do have an irrigation system here in town, be prepared to pay for that. Secondly, they were looking at perhaps annual inspections. And when I raised the question of how they were going to cover all of this, we were then looking at perhaps more town employees. I'm going to tell you, there's a lot of issues at this time in terms of inspections. I mean, the water irrigation was one. I'd be happy if the rental control and taking a look at the occupation of houses by rental, by renters who exceed numbers that are extraordinary, along with the on-street parking and other things that go on in our neighborhoods. So, they had this, this particular section in here of 142-11 really is very concerning to me about all the, these systems. All automatic lawn sprinkler systems must, shall be registered with the DPW. A fee may be charged, and the registration fees will be set by the Water Commissioners. And then the conversation to elaborate on it at the time, at the meeting I was at, talked about annual inspections. I'm very concerned about this.
Thank you. Sir?
David Reed, Precinct Four. I have a question about the motion and the article. The, as Mr. Colby mentioned a moment ago, there already is a Chapter 142 in our general bylaw entitled Water Supply Emergencies, and it already contains a Section 142, 1 through 142.7. But the article that was moved simply asks to add to Chapter 142 the following sections. Is it the intention, Mr. Colby, to replace the existing Chapter 142 with the new ones, not to add them to it, but to replace them with this new one? If so, I would ask of Town Council, doesn't the motion need to say that? And if it does, is such a motion within the scope of the printed warrant article?
Okay. I'll defer to whoever, the question is really more policy than mechanical, so I'm wondering if someone wants to respond to that. Yeah?
So, unfortunately, I don't have the existing bylaw at hand. I don't know if Mr. Colby does.
Would you like it?
But to the extent that it's going to be replaced, it's number one, if that were the issue, it should be revised to reflect that. And it would be a moderator's call to determine whether that was in the scope, and I would suggest it is, because this is the bylaw that we're talking about this evening. But that would be a moderator's question. I don't have the bylaw in front of me, so I don't know if the intention was to replace.
It appears to be in scope.
Mr. Moderator?
Yep.
The intent, Jeff Colby?
Yep.
The intention is to replace, and this to be the exact language for Chapter 142.
Okay, to replace. That's the, Mr. Colby answered the question.
It doesn't, it partially answers the question, but doesn't the motion need to say that? Was my question. Because the motion simply says to add, not to take anything else away from Chapter 142.
Want me to, want me to do it?
I'm not going to take a stab at that. Mr. Moderator?
Yep.
We'll prepare that language right now.
Okay.
By council. Yes, sir.
Point of order, Mr. Moderator? The Board of Selectmen, written, how can they actually change it right now?
Let me just, hold on, let me recognize you in a second, Tom. Let me take this question, question first here, as long as it's about a motion.
Yes. Lee Hawkins from Precinct Seven. I have a question that I think was asked a minute ago but didn't get answered. Will these restrictions apply to irrigation systems tied to private wells? And if not, why not?
I didn't, I didn't hear exactly, just for my benefit. What was the question?
The question is whether these restrictions, water restrictions, will apply to irrigation systems that are on private wells.
On private roads?
Private wells.
Private wells, I'm sorry, private wells.
You got cranberry bugs here.
Think that came up last week, too. Mr. Moderator? I believe it's public water, but go ahead, Jeff.
The intention is this for to be public water supply? That's certainly something that could be considered in the future to apply that to private wells, but at this point, it's a public water supply article.
The reason I ask the question is, if it's drawing from the same aquifer, that doesn't seem to make sense to me if we're having a drought. And I consider the aquifer is a public water supply. So, I'm just concerned why it doesn't apply.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Tom Sullivan, Precinct One. If, Mr. Moderator, could you leave, give me a little leeway on the time on this? I'm going to make an amendment to this article, but first of all, I'd like to correct a couple of things that were said. I have a background in this water. I'm a weather spotter for the National Weather Service. I've been doing this now close to 20 years. I collect water for the National Weather Service at my house, and I report it every morning, 8 o'clock job, on the amount of water that falls, so I follow this very closely. And as far as climate change, no. The weather that we had this summer is a direct effect from El Niña in the Pacific Ocean. It comes and goes. Right now, it's fading. So, that's why they're looking at possibly a rough winter here. The aquifer, which starts at the Cape Cod Canal, extends all the way down here to Bass River. And in some cases, it actually goes under the river, they believe, into the Monomoy Lands, which goes down to Lower Cape. In June, leading up to June, we had normal rainfall. June was above normal. So, at the end of June, our aquifer was actually above normal. So, for the eight weeks we had, approximately eight weeks, the aquifer didn't fall below normal limits. The aquifer was full. We had no water shortage. We're fortunate to have something this large, when all, like the city of Worcester, has to depend on small reservoirs that they have built up there off Fall River. If you go down on Route 24 in Fall River, you'll see their reservoir where they get their water. Yeah, they got low. These restrictions, I think, would apply to the cities. But here, we don't. Unless this went on for two or three years, I do not see our aquifer get down. To add on to this with the water totals, just to give you an example, in October alone at my station, and I have other stations here in Yarmouth, we had seven and a half inches of rainfall. And right now, we're up to over two and a half with a few half this month, which is a little above the average for rainfall. As far as the, this article, this article is very restrictive, especially on the private homeowners. So, Mr. Moderator, I'd like to amend this article, if I may. You have it in writing?
Yep.
In front of you. On the Section 142-11, irrigation systems connected to public water supply registration, all, I'm going to read the article, yeah, what it is. All automatic sprinkler systems connected to municipal water systems in the town of Yarmouth shall be registered with the DPW Water Division. A fee may be charged for this registration. Registration fees may be set by the Board. It says Water, but actually the Board of Selectmen. My motion to amend is delete the, this section of the article. Delete it completely. It is, this is an invasion on a person's right to work their own property. Now, we heard during the hearing, I was the second person that attended the meeting last week out of the three, they're concerned, the Water Department's concerned about backflow problems on sprinkler systems.
Tom, could I interrupt you just for a second?
Go ahead.
We, you made an amended motion.
Yeah.
We need a second.
A second?
Okay. Now, start talking about the amended motion.
Okay. The motion is intrusive on our private rights as property owners. And what the DPW says, well, they need to know how many sprinkler systems are here in the town of Yarmouth. They're concerned about backflow problems. How many, how long have we've had sprinkler systems in the town of Yarmouth at private homes? 20, 30 years? All of a sudden, now they're concerned about it. To let you know, a sprinkler system has to be, first of all, installed by a licensed plumber. And under the law, a backflow system has to be put in on it. Now, I have a sprinkler system that was put in three years ago by a licensed plumber. I have a backflow system. I also have a rain gauge monitor, too, up in the corner of my house, so if a thunderstorm is coming, it automatically shuts it off if it's running.
Tom, I gotta give you about another minute.
All right. It's only common sense. All right. It's only common sense. The other thing is, yeah, there were violations during the summer. People didn't know. Most of my neighbors were running them. They live up in Athol. I told them, they shut it off. What I did see, which irritated me the most, is the water park. We were in Category 2, no watering during the day. Yet they hooked a fire hose, issued a water meter by the water department into a hydrant, so they could get their water when there was a water restriction going. That concerns me the most. The businesses in this town not abiding by it, having swimming pools, having waterfalls, et cetera. That's why I've asked this, to be deleted as far as sprinkler systems. This would cover them, too. All right? Because they would have to register their systems along with the private owners. So.
Thanks, Tom. We have a quick comment over here.
Should that amendment, or, because I was going to address the...
This is the amendment to eliminate the irrigate, it's 142-11, basically to eliminate the entire portion from the bylaw.
Mr. Moderator?
Okay, one, one more question on the amendment.
Just, just speaking on this amendment?
Yes.
I think it's a good idea if we could just get that off the table for now. Doesn't mean that later we might have to register our irrigation systems, but to do it right now, when making all of these changes at the same time, if we just got rid of that one thing, if we made a motion, then I think we can move on. That's my guess.
Did I hear, is there a question?
Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Gordon?
I'd like to speak to the amendment, please.
Yes.
Ladies and gentlemen, what's being suggested is to delete the registration requirement. How are we going to know where the systems are in town if we don't register them? How are we going to know if the systems in town have rain gauges? How many of you walked around your neighborhoods during the rainstorms and saw systems still running? I know I did. How are we going to know if the systems that are in town have backflow devices? We've never checked these devices as they were installed. We don't even know where they are. This is just giving the town a database by which we can ensure that basic safeguards are put in place. Backflow devices protect the aquifer from contaminants going back in, fertilizers and things that people are putting on their lawns. Rain gauges, that's just common sense. These things need to be utilized, and right now, we have no way of ensuring that. This whole thing came about, if you're aware, we had a horrible spring. We found out that we were losing our wells due to contamination. We talked about that earlier tonight. Then we had a dramatic drought come in, and we asked our DPW and our consultants, give us a plan, because right now, we have no way of dealing with this, no way of enforcing anything in this town. When we got that, we unanimously supported the bylaw that was being proposed to us. We implemented it, and then we discovered that we had major issues right away. Communication was a problem. People weren't getting news. People didn't have landlines anymore, second homeowners. And what we realized is that people were just simply not complying, particularly the people who had irrigation systems. How many of you walked around your neighborhoods and saw them continuously moving and moving water in the midst of a Level 3 drought? We just cannot allow that to continue. And this bylaw gives us an enforcement capacity to ensure that you and your neighbors have drinking water and that we have enough water to fight a fire should it happen. A question was raised earlier about, you know, whether we're going to apply it to private wells. Yes, there are some questions that still need to be worked out. There are policy considerations that the Board of Selectmen, as your water commissioners, need to address. But this is an emergent situation. We were in serious trouble this summer, and do any of you think that this could reoccur? Absolutely. The pollution, the contaminants, are something we're going to be facing for the foreseeable future. Droughts, do you think that's going to happen again? The entire state was in Level 3. We're still in Level 2. Somebody said earlier that we're out of the drought? I don't think so. This is protecting basic water for the residents of this town. It's not perfect, it's not complete, but it's emergent, and we're doing our best to protect the citizens of this town. And we ask you to vote no on this amendment and to support the bylaw. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll take two more quick questions on the amendment. I'd like to move the, I'd like to move. Let Mr. Saban, Saban just, give him an opportunity. Jim, did you have something to add?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I appreciate the comments from the chair, from the selectmen. How do we know that people have irrigation systems? I just heard people tell me they saw 50 of them in their neighborhood. We didn't have to register them. People knew. You know, how do we know this stuff? We drive around in our community. Every day, I hear a common response in this town. We don't have enough staff to get it done. And that follows every town department. Now we're going to ask them to get more done. You know, I have no problem with voluntarily letting you know I have an irrigation system, but now you're going to throw a fine in there if I don't tell you that, and you're going to set a fee, and that you're not going to tell me what that fee is until you have another hearing where three quarters, excuse me, three people will show up, too, and you're going to set a fee for the rest of us that we don't even know about because we're not letting our people know. How do we know about a drought? Maybe we did a really lousy job as a town notifying the people. I get notices in my mail almost every day about people running for this, that, and the other thing. But the town can't send a memo out into the community to let us know we had a drought? Lots of people just didn't know what the restrictions were. So maybe we need to do a better job of communicating when we have a drought and not putting these types of restrictions on us. So I move that we support the amendment.
Thank you. We're going to take a vote now on the amendment.
Nobody called the question. Can I?
I can call the question.
Listen, how?
He actually was calling the question.
But you asked.
No, you walked away.
We've had, we've had full discussion about the amendment.
I just want to make a comment about how you, how the DPW would know, you know, who's using the water when it's supposed to be restricted use. By the bills they sent out. It's very simple. How did he, how did he know to show us the slide that said the voluntary, you know, adherence to the restrictions produced the, you know, required result? He knew that. And so there's, I think that's a totally unnecessary, you know, something.
Thank you, Tom. I'll give you 20 seconds for the last word.
Okay, I was only going to ask for 30. I kind of take objection to a member of the Board of Selectmen using scare tactics. This is the first time, I've been on Cape Cod, living here for over 50 years, this is the first time I've ever seen this type of restriction being put on the water, especially even here in Yarmouth. All right, we do get droughts. We've had minor ones in the past. But this year is a seasonal. I don't believe it's caused from climate change. I believe it's caused by just normal earth weather or climate. El Nino.
Yep.
Okay, so, question is, then I will leave to the voters. What right does the town know, have to know what we do with our water sprinkler systems?
We're going to take a vote. I'd like, all in favor of the amendment to eliminate Section 142-11 from this article, please stand and say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please stand and say aye. The, based on what I can see and hear, the amendment fails. But if somebody wants to have a recount, we will do that. Okay. We need seven people?
No.
We can recount. We got people, do we have people?
We have.
Yeah. Stand, if you, if you were in the first groups, oppose, favor of the amendment.
We've got to get the, we've got to get the tellers.
Yeah, we've got, who do we have?
We've got people coming.
We've got people coming to count.
If I could just ask, as people mark you off, if you'd sit down, please, as the counter goes by you. They're as they're walking by. Tellers, if you could come forward when you've completed your section, please.
Okay, once everyone sits down, we'll take the next, the group that's opposed to the amendment.
Yes. We need...
All opposed to the amendment?
I'm sorry, did you get the gentleman in the back? You did.
Okay.
You got this whole section. Okay.
Now, all opposed to the amendment.
Wait, 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 they have to report the numbers.
Oh, they have to report the number, okay.
You, 16, 9, 19. Did somebody count? You had five, Marcia. And Dakota, did you count the stage?
No.
Okay, okay. And you had eight. All right, so. Sorry, give me a second. So that was 57.
57. Shall we announce that?
No.
Okay.
Yeah.
Now, all opposed to the amendment, please stand. Are the tellers ready?
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. Dakota, Bruce, Marcia, Debbie. So Dakota, you had 19. You had how many?
Eight.
Eight. Bruce, 14.
13.
57 to 58?
68.
68, okay. Can I announce that?
Mm-hmm.
The total vote to favor the amendment was 57. The total vote to oppose the amendment was 68. So the amendment does not pass. Okay, so we're back to the motion. We've had, are there any further comments specific to the motion that's not, you know, that, we've hashed it out pretty good. I'll start over here. Hold on one second, Norm.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to make an amendment to the motion.
Yes, sir.
All right. And, and please indulge me, give me just a minute to explain why we're doing this. All right, Mr. Moderator, I move to amend Article 18 to strike the word "adding" and insert the fol, the fol, and insert the following in its place, quote, "replacing" Chapter 142 of the town's current bylaws. Somebody's second?
Second.
Okay. May I explain, Mr. Moderator? Go ahead.
Real quick, earlier this evening, we heard from David Reed, who asked for clarification as to whether or not the bylaw that's being proposed in the article is in addition to what we currently have on the books or is replacing. This language clarifies it and makes it abundantly clear that the bylaw being established in this article will essentially replace what's currently on the books. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions, comments on the amendment?
I thought you seconded, yeah.
I have a question.
Any questions on the amendment? Yes, sir. Tom?
Tom Sullivan, is this a amendment made by the Board of Selectmen or an individual? Because the Board of Selectmen's already recorded as 5-0 against the original article. So is this a change in the Board of Selectmen vote? And when are the Board of Selectmen going to have a meeting on this? Before town meeting? This must be, is this from the Board itself?
I'll let Mr. Forrest answer for himself.
I'm offering it as a resident and voter in the town.
As a voter. So this is not by the Board of Selectmen. So the Board of Selectmen's changed and has to change 5 to 0 for the article, the original article. And they also would have to vote on this amendment as a Board of Selectmen before you come to town meeting.
It's, the, our position is substantively the same, and each of the board members has reviewed the amendment.
I didn't see any vote taken by the other members of the Board before this was come through.
We have a vote on the amendment. All in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
All opposed. The amendment carries. Okay, so now back to the motion. Mr. Holcomb. Oh, I skipped her. She poured. I keep, she, go ahead, go ahead, Norm.
Thank you, Norm Holcomb. I'd like to propose an amendment that Section 142-12 be eliminated. I think that throwing all of this on the town at this point, given all the variables that occurred in the last six months, is totally inappropriate. The, we had complications because of PFAs in the water. We had a drought. How many times in the past have we had droughts over the last few summers? This is a, a single event and complicated by the PFAS problem. And now you're throwing penalties on tops of fees. I think that it's a big power grab, and it's expensive, going to be expensive to the town to inspect this and carry out the provisions of this, of this entire article.
Norm, was your amendment, you recommended an amendment to 142-12?
I recommend that it be pulled.
Which is the penalty, okay. Norm, I would need that in writing. We require an amendment in writing, if you want to. We'll give you a piece of paper and pen. I want you to write it out.
What'd you get?
Fifty.
Fifty?
Yes.
Okay. All opposed to the amendment to withdraw the motion, please stand. The motion fails by a vote of eighty-two to fifty. I'm now going to call for a vote on the motion as amended by Mr. Forrest's amendment. All in favor of the motion, Article eighteen as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The motion carries. Article eighteen as amended carries. Article nineteen, Select Woman McGurran.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'd ask for a little indulgence, this is going to be a long motion.
Hold, excuse me, one second. Pardon?
I proposed an amendment.
You didn't put it in writing.
I did, it's right here.
That's what you wanted, you'd expect me to run it up there? I can't accept the amendment.
Did you expect me to run it up to the table or something?
Yeah.
Yeah, we have to be able to read it. Back to Select Woman McGurran.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote pursuant to the Community Preservation Act, General Laws, Chapter forty-four B, and other applicable authority to purchase or take by eminent domain certain parcels of property totaling nine point six acres located on Higgins Crow Road at Assessors Map sixty-four, Parcels thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-four, and thirty-five, and Assessors Map seventy-four, Parcels one, two, three, and four. Said property to be managed by the Yarmouth Board of Water Commissioners and used exclusively for water supply protection and land conservation purposes under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter forty, Section thirty-nine B, and forty-one, and Article ninety-seven of the Amendments to the Massachusetts Constitution. And to fund such purchase, transfer six hundred thousand from the Community Preservation Open Space Reserve, transfer three hundred thousand from the Water Special Revenue Fund Reserves, and transfer three hundred thousand from the Drinking Water Supply Protection Grant, also known as DWSP. Chapter three-one-two of the Acts of two thousand eight, Section two A, twenty-two-hundred to seventy-seventeen, and Chapter two-oh-nine of the Acts of twenty-eighteen, Section two A, two thousand to seven, seventy-seventy-two, for a total of one million, two hundred thousand dollars for the said purchase, and further to authorize the Select Board or any other town entity to accept and expend any grants to assist in the purchase of said property and consistent with total costs as stated in the DWSP application as amended, and further to authorize the Select Board to negotiate any and all agreements and instruments associated with such purchase, and further to authorize the Select Board to grant or accept perpetual restrictions limiting the use of the property as aforesaid.
Board of Selectmen?
Recommend five-zero.
Finance Committee?
Recommends four-zero.
Explanation?
This article would provide funding necessary to move forward with the acquisition of almost ten acres of vacant undeveloped land located on Higgins Crow Road. This land has been approved for ten units of single-family housing. This acquisition is in keeping with the goals of the town's Open Space and Recreation Plan, as well as the Water Master Plan, which recommends the town consider acquiring properties within one thousand feet of existing wells. Acquisition of this property will help to protect our drinking water. The agreed-upon sales price for this property is one million, two hundred thousand dollars. Funding for this acquisition comes from three sources: six hundred thousand from the Community Preservation Open Space Reserve, three hundred thousand from water, and three hundred thousand from the Massachusetts Drinking Water Supply Program Grant.
Thank you, did we have a second for that motion? Okay, thank you. Questions, comments? Miss Ma'am.
Sheila Palace, Precinct, I mean, I'm on five, not precinct, what's the other one? Precinct five, yeah, Higgins Crow Road. I don't have a map of that, but that's where I live, and I was wondering if number four, seven, nine is affected by that. Is that an area that's near four, seven, nine Higgins Crow Road? I don't have the map. Because my property is next to the New Testament Baptist Church, and I bought the water road, and I was wondering if that would be affecting my property. Could you tell me, number, I'm at four, seven, nine Higgins Crow Road? It's like directly across from Lumberjack Trail. Is that going to affect my home?
Either Mr. Colby can answer that now, and if not, we will get you, we will commit to an answer. Jeff?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I believe your property is just to the north of this acquisition, it doesn't affect your property specifically, but the map is on the screen there, I believe you're just to the north of the yellow highlighted parcels which are the acquisition.
Okay, and if you, go ahead.
Well, I'm right next to the water road, and if the wires that were, are entangled in my trees, I don't know if they're entangled on my property or the town Yarmouth Water Road, they're all entangled in it. I've had no Internet for five years, and I don't know if I have to pay for the trees to get, take away from the entangled wires, or if it's on the town's property, because it's right on the line, and when they were cutting down the trees, I tried to find out because they're entangled in dangerous trees, are entangled in wires for many years. With the winter coming, they're probably going to-
And I hate to commit, Mr. Colby, this, but I'm going to, if you can get your information to Mr. Colby, the Department of Public Works, we will definitely respond to your issue.
I did, I spoke with Mr. Colby at the time.
This guy's a good responder. Yes, sir?
Yes, Elvia Rodriguez, Precinct four. You are targeting the wrong properties and the wrong wells. The wells in this area are doing satisfactory. The wells that are not performing are performing badly, I mean, badly isn't even the word, it's horrendous. The wells that are being affected by high levels of nitrogen, and now the PFAs, is down in South Yarmouth, and they surround a property on Forest Avenue. Let me, let me read an article that was approved at town meeting in two thousand and eleven. It says, "To see if the town will vote to raise transfer from available funds or transfer of town-owned land of equal value for the acquisition by purchase eminent domain, transfer of land or otherwise for open space conservation on land presently owned by the Yarmouth Housing Authority in South Yarmouth." Parcel two, containing eighteen point six eight acres, et cetera, and, you know, deeds and plan books and all that. This passed by a large majority, and for ten years now, the town administration has done nothing on this article, has not moved on this article whatsoever. And these are the wells that are really harmful to us. Well number eleven, off of Forest Road, just recently recorded a six point two nitrate level. At ten, the ballgame is over, I mean, the towns, I mean, the DEP will shut that thing down, plus in the interim, we've got infants that, when they hit ten parts per million in nitrates, they pass away, and elderly affected too, not just infants. This is the worst situation that we have in this town, and we all are, all are being affected by it, we all drink this water. Why are we going to spend money to get land around wells that are performing okay, and we're not moving on this article that was approved? This, the town residents did not want that property in Forest Road developed, for good reasons. This is just one of them, this is just one of them. That land also provides water to Captain's Village, and in normal rainfall periods, sixty people have to pump their cellars, sixty. So we're going to add more water, more nitrates, and more water for Captain's Village, and the town has done nothing for a decade. I think this is horrible that we are even proposing this. Now we're going to protect wells that are performing okay, and we're going to let that land be developed on Forest Road. I hope the people here will vote this down and redirect their attention to where the real problem is, and the real problem is wells four, five, ten, eleven, all of them have high nitrates, and any nitrate above five, the DEP says, "You are in trouble, and you better do something about it." And what have we done about it? Nothing, we have done nothing. And this does nothing. If this passes, it's a waste of money. You should put your money on negotiating with the Yarmouth Housing Authority, and give them equal land, or buy the property, do something, because this is where the problem is in town. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I guess it would be good to get a response to that. Mr. Moderator?
CPC recommends.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to respond to that, please. The acquisition of this property is not to remediate any problem with a particular well, it's the opposite, it's to prevent future contamination of wells by looking hard at any properties that are available within a thousand feet of a well. It also depends upon availability of the property, and it also depends upon reaching a fair price, a price the town feels it can afford, a price where the town feels it can get value for the money. The, this property was owned by the Diocese of Fall River, and there was ongoing and extensive negotiations to reach this price, and I was on that committee that negotiated this, and I believe that we got this property at a fair price, and it would be a serious mistake for the town to pass on this opportunity. Thank you.
Could I respond to that?
Yeah, yes.
Well, I don't think anybody has even tried to negotiate with the Yarmouth Housing Authority. In the article that passed in two thousand and eleven, said that, it also added that you could swap properties. There are a lot of conservation areas that could be given them so they can build affordable housing. This would be a disaster if they build, put more units on this property. The whole reason that we have the high PFAs and these nitrates is strictly density, and I would challenge anybody in town to tell me differently. You know this is the problem, so we are opening ourselves for more building by the Housing Authority, and why don't you negotiate with them? Offer them some land, for the land that they have, and build on property that is, does not feed any wells. There's properties like German Hill area, there's seventy-six acres there, seventy-six acres on German Hill area.
Yeah.
Doesn't feed-
Could I, you know, there is a time, and you've made it very clear, here's my point. I don't think this is really pertinent to this specific, what Mr. Stone just talked about, but I would suggest, and I guess I'd hope every citizen knows that, as an individual, and with, you're talking about an article that you say nothing ever got done on, I hope the town will offer recourse in some way for this, but maybe not this forum right here pertinent to this article. So I want to let you, I think people appreciate what you're saying.
Could I just have one more sentence?
Yeah, like twenty seconds.
If you haven't done anything in ten years, then you're not going to do anything.
Yeah.
All of you, all of you up there are not doing anything, and you must, this is our town, it doesn't belong to the Yarmouth Housing Authority. They need housing, give them an avenue of where to put it. Thank you.
Thank you. For the record, for the record, the warrant, the warrant actually says Assessors Map fifty-four, that is a Scrivener's error that should say sixty-four. Doesn't change anything, but for the record, I need to acknowledge that. Did you have a question or comment?
Mr. Moderator? Mr. Moderator?
Oh, Mr. Saban, you're hiding on me.
Good afternoon, good evening, Jim Saban. I happen to be the Vice Chair of the Land Disposition Committee in town, which is involved in looking at properties that the town has purchased in the past through a number of different ways, either through foreclosure or through purchase, and trying to make some determinations as to whether there are pieces of property we should actually own or not, and some of them we've recommended that we make available for sale. But in that process, we ask for an input from all of the departments, housing, we ask for water, conservation, et cetera. So my question is this, did these other departments in the community weigh in? I think it's, it doesn't take a rocket scientist to understand that we have a huge housing crisis in our town, and a lot of us complain about putting housing on Route twenty-eight, yet here's an opportunity that we might consider putting housing somewhere else other than our business community. So I'm curious to know whether the housing people here in town and the other departments have weighed in on this purchase, so that ten years from now, we don't have to have the Land Disposition Committee have this discussion again, should we have to. So that's my question.
Good. Who wants, who could respond to that? I guess the question is, was that land looked at for, I think your question is for other purposes?
Yes, it was analyzed through the Community Development Department, and because of the sensitive location within a thousand feet of one of our major public water supply wells, we do not feel that this is an appropriate place for housing development.
Is that the position of the housing people, or is that the position of town staff and Community Development Department, or did we actually get input from the housing people? You know, we had actually written letters from each department for each piece of property that we looked at, that said, "This is the reasons we like it, and this is the reasons we don't." So my question is, did you actually go through that process, or did just somebody say, "Hey, we really think this is good"?
I think you're referring to the process for disposing of property.
Correct. Did we use the same process for purchase?
This, no, it's not the same process.
Did we?
No, we did not.
That's the answer.
Okay, thank you. Yes, sir.
Ken McGuire from Precinct Five. I can appreciate all the comments that this gentleman made over here, I mean, we're all responsible for our town aquifer. I look at this as an opportunity to protect some of the undeveloped property that sits on one of our town wells, so I would hope that everyone would support it, you know, as an opportunity at, in today's marketplace, at a reasonable price.
Okay, thank you. So you know our questions, we need a, this is a two-thirds major, oh, I'm sorry, you're sneaking up on me.
Sorry, Beth Conway just took five, and I want to support what he just said, so this land would be protected, and it has been, for this owned by the Diocese of Fall River, has been, I don't know, it's never been used for housing, so that's probably the reason that those wells are in such good standing. So we want to keep that in mind, protect the ones that are doing well, so that's all I want to say.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion passes out of a two-thirds vote. Article twenty will be presented by George Slama of the Historical Commission.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm George Slama, I'm also the Vice Chair of the Historical Commission. This article will provide funding for professional-
You need to move the motion first.
Sorry. CPC moves.
Okay, do we have a second? Okay, Board of Selectmen?
Recommend.
Recommend. Finance Committee?
Recommends.
And does the CPA have a recommendation from the floor?
CPC recommends.
Okay, now explanation?
Yes. This article provides funding for professional services needed to meet design and engineering requirements for Phase Two rehabilitation efforts at the Taylor Bray Farm Bond, including internal and external finishes. Professional services include site survey, civil engineering, permitting, and mechanical design. Required to develop bid specifications to carry out the Phase Two improvements to complete the rehabilitation of this historic bond, which is an integral component of the Taylor Bray Farm.
Before we move on, we just need to redo the motion.
I move this article as printed in the warrant.
And it's seconded, okay, and we've now had the explanation. Comments, questions? Thank you, hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries. Article twenty-one will be presented by select person McGurran.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move Article twenty-one as printed in the warrant.
Board of Selectmen?
Recommends five-zero.
Finance vote on this?
I don't believe we did, no.
No. Explanation?
The original deed from the Town of Dennis to the Mid-Cape Ice Arena Inc., also known as Tony Kent Arena, provides that the agency must use reasonable efforts to allow the occasional use of the facility for activities other than skating by the Dennis Recreation Commission, the Yarmouth Recreation Commission, and the Dennis-Yarmouth Regional High School, at no charge or at a nominal charge. Additionally, the bylaws of the Mid-Cape Ice Arena provide that the Yarmouth Selectmen may appoint a member of their board of, may appoint a member to their Board of Directors. This article seeks to provide town meeting authorization for the Board of Selectmen to make an appointment to the Board of Directors of the Mid-Cape Ice Arena.
Questions, comments? All in favor of Article twenty-one, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries. Article twenty-two will be presented by Joanne Crowley, the Chair of the Planning Board.
Mr. Moderator, I move Article twenty-two as printed in the warrant with the deletion of Section One relative to modifying the Use Regulation Table and Section Two.
Board of Selectmen?
Recommend.
Planning Board?
Planning Board recommends unanimously.
Okay, explanation?
The motion to amend Article twenty-two eliminates Items One and Two. I'd appreciate if we could have the slide up that shows the amendment, thank you. Which would have allowed for duplexes in other, and as another housing type within the Village Center Overlay District. However, during public hearing and review with the Board of Selectmen, there were concerns that this change may be perceived as being more substantial and may raise questions and debate about an otherwise minor housekeeping zoning amendment. To expedite the passage of this article, the Planning Board decided to remove these two items from the article. The remaining changes contained within the article include relatively minor amendments to simplify some of the complexities in the VCOD bylaw and allow for more flexibility in its implementations, while retaining high design standards. The article addresses some issues that have arisen in review of past VCOD projects, review of upcoming projects, and consideration of projects developed in flood zones that are subject to specific building code requirements. The remaining proposed amendments would require a permit from the Building Commissioner per Section three-oh-two-point-one for fill in excess of four feet, rather than prohibiting it. Increase the maximum front yard setback in VC One from twenty to twenty-five feet, only for properties within flood zones, to allow for softer grade transition. Allow for more relief to be given via special permit, which is currently limited to dimensional relief only. Modify the sidewalk improvements requirements along Route twenty-eight frontage to avoid duplication and provide walkways where needed. Clarify that shop windows or displays apply only to commercial uses. Modify the options for window styles on upper floors to include double-hung or other acceptable styles. Clarify that dormers or other architectural elements are required on pitched roof lines of fifty feet or more in length. Identify the style of roof models allowed in all of the Village Centers. Allow for breaks and landscape buffers for water access and water views, and finally, to defer to the existing sign bylaw for size of any freestanding signs within the VCOD. These amendments apply only to the Village Center Overlay District located along Route twenty-eight from Scally's at Winslow Gray Road to Lyman Lane near Town Hall. It's a limited section of Route twenty-eight.
Jane, please refer, there's a map presented for you. Any questions or comments? The two-thirds vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries by a two-thirds vote. Do we, Article twenty-three, petition? Do we have, we have Sarah Coles? Hi, Sarah.
The petitioner moves to indefinitely postpone Article twenty-three.
We have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any questions, comments? All in favor of the motion to postpone, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. To defer. I'll accept, thank you. Is there any other thing? I think we're finished with the articles. Will make, take a motion to adjourn? Seconded? All in favor? Drive carefully. Thank you.